Okay.
That's good. Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right. All right, Steve's here. Here we go. Let's begin. We'll call a meeting to order with, and we'll have the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
A move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
I support that.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. No public participation, so we'll move on to our only item tonight. And as all of you know, from our conversations over the weekend, looking at our plan, there's been some things that have bubbled up that have propped us to take a look at making a slight adjustment to our timeline. And in doing so, permitting an additional window of application. With the things that we've all been through over the last 10 weeks, there have been a lot of adjustments made by a lot of people. And this is an opportunity for those people who may have had a reason to make an adjustment that would have had the way of making application in the first round, give them the opportunity to do so now. So that being said, I gave you all of you, but I'm going to turn it over to John and let John just kind of give us an overview of where we're at right now.
Okay, yeah, I was surprised actually, late this past week, we were all set to roll and then there from one candidate initially, which honestly I dismissed when I heard it the first time, that he was assuming that he would still have an opportunity to apply. He misconstrued the message about the search being postponed and presumed that that would mean that when it was started up again, he'd have an opportunity to apply. But then when I heard that from a second person, and the way I heard it from the second person was communicating to me how excited he was about applying for the Lake Orion superintendency. And I had to tell him, well, you know, that's currently not open. So it left me wondering a bit, could there be others who had the same misunderstanding? And as Jim said, could there be others too, who just circumstance has changed since March 30th, and perhaps they're available now where they wouldn't have been before? So what I, we certainly don't want to do, I think, it doesn't reflect that it's a poor applicant field that we currently have, but you sure don't want to lose the opportunity to take all comers, so to speak, and make sure you have the opportunity to review the applications from anybody and everybody who may be a qualified applicant for this position. So I think you owe it to yourselves and your community. So I appreciate the willingness to delay a bit to make sure we get this right and we're as thorough as we can be. It will give me the opportunity too, by the way, and I'll take advantage of the opportunity to go back out. I had done some recruitment before and with some applicants, they for one reason or another chose not to apply. I'm going to hit those same people up again, see if they may have had a change of heart. And there's a couple of others that have come under my radar that I'm going to reach out to as well. So I will take full advantage of the additional time too. So I had, go ahead.
John, I'd like to note that, that the entire board is fully behind us and prepared to move forward with it together. So I think everybody sees the opportunity that exists here to get as many possibilities in the group as possible.
Okay. And I will, I have a message kind of in the can to all of the current applicants. And so once we have this, the timeline date set, in particular, the meeting now where we'll get back together again and go into closed session to see all of the applications and select those to interview. I want to share that date with them and reassure them that, of course, we're glad they're still interested. Hang in there, there's going to be a slight delay before the board makes that decision. So you got, I presume, the draft timeline that we forwarded today. Great. So this shows per this that we would, if we stick to this, it gets fairly aggressive, I think, especially towards the end. Where it's got a selection of superintendent on Monday, July 6th, and then it's got the person starting on July 27th. Even though there wouldn't be action to hire the new superintendent until the 13th, in reality, it's a matter of negotiating a contract. You presume at that point that I think I've told you before, that virtually, it's virtually unheard of that you would select your new superintendent and then would fail to agree on a contract and would have to then continue to search. So I would presume that once the selection was made, that person would be able to, even though not officially give notice to his or her district, they wouldn't want to do that until you took action to hire. They could certainly begin a transition and prepare for a departure for Lake Orion a few weeks later.
Yes. I have a question here, John. Nate?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. I was, I was on meetings all day and didn't see a timeline that was set today. So I was wondering, John, if you could just hit a few of the key dates, or is it okay? Like, I want to make sure I don't, I know what I'm missing. I can catch up after the meeting, but I didn't have a chance to look at anything.
Nate, is there a board book if you open up board book for tonight's meeting?
If you're. Okay, so we can pull it up and look as we go. Okay, cool. Thank you, Julie. I wasn't sure where to look. Thanks.
Okay, so at this point, and I splashed draft across this because I want to be clear that that's what it is. But so it was a first stab at this. If you had a chance to take a look, I just really want to invite you to share what questions you may have or concerns you may have, and we'll discuss from there.
Yes, Fergie.
Hi. I am curious, I know that there's been discussion or there is a potential for, or maybe there's not a potential. Help me understand the timeline and how you ended up with three weeks of reopening the application process as opposed to say two weeks.
Well, I mean, that's, it's subjective, Fergie, very honestly, it is. It's just, you know, my gut feeling is that I want to make sure, in other words, that we don't have the same issue where if it's too small a window, and here we're working to get the word out. I don't want two weeks to lapse and then a day or two later have somebody say, oh, I just heard Lake Orion was reopened and I'm interested in applying. I want to make sure there's enough time for that word to get out there. Because for some folks, there's going to be an assumption that it's closed. And wherever they may be looking to get such information, I want to be sure that they have plenty of time to see it. In all honesty, though, if as a board, you determine you'd like to move this along faster and would like to shrink that window. Again, it's subjective, and we certainly could do so.
Fergie, John and I had the same conversation on Friday and, and for those reasons, it seemed reasonable that to ensure that all the steps could be taken by John to reach out to people. Even if we posted today, it's, it's going to be a tight three weeks and that clock will move rather quickly. And so I wouldn't want to miss that opportunity to get the word out to people who would potentially be interested in be viable candidates. Steve, did you have a question? Oh, you got it. There you go.
Thank you. John, can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Hello to everybody and hello to you, sir. Jim described it well, on behalf of all of us board members to extend the deadline for the reasons that you stated. But at the same token, is this going to be a firm deadline, the next, the second deadline that we have? Because I do believe that we should need to abide by deadlines.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, this is, if I can just add this, this is such an unprecedented experience for all of us. We're doing the best we can with it, but it just, you know, we're making the best of a difficult situation where who would have anticipated right in the middle of our.
Nobody, nobody.
Right, so, but now that we, we once this is set, there is absolutely no reason, even for example, if three weeks went by and then somebody were to say, oh, I didn't realize this had been reposted and I missed it. That's the way it is. You can't let it go forever. We have to move on. Superintendent.
Hey, Jim, my follow up question or part two of my question was, you used the word recruitment. So you are actively seeking out people in addition to who people are applying. Is that correct? Or am I?
Sure, I had done that originally. And what I'm saying to you is that given that this, if we, given that we're reopening the window, it would be an opportunity to reach back out, honestly, to two or three that I can think of, three actually come to mind that I had a conversation with that for various reasons.
Weren't able to apply.
Not to apply. It's, it's long enough later that I may try to twist the arm a little bit and see if there's any fart. And again, as I said, there's been a couple of other names through various searches that have kind of come to the fore that I want to reach out to as well. So it's an opportunity that I might as well take advantage of, sure.
And we agree, or I agree, I'm speaking for myself. But you indicated this light bulb came on when two people contacted you. They contacted you by phone or email? I'm just curious.
Both, one by text, actually, one by email.
And you responded accordingly, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Other questions for John?
I do want to stress again, I want to be flexible with this. None of this is set in stone, even, it doesn't have to be kind of uneven. It's either a two week or a three week period. For example, if there's any benefit right now, we would have it for what you're looking at, going through. Due on Monday, June 1st, could we make it the previous Friday, which would make it more like two and a half weeks? And we're sure we could. We would want to do that if it would, if it would benefit us in some other way.
Yes, Jake.
Hi, John. You know, thanks for, for meeting with us. When, given that we're coming out of the, we could be coming out of the restrictions of stay, stay, stay safe, stay home. So at what point would we have to put it out there that we wanted to do one or one of the rounds of interviews in person, or we wanted to do stakeholder meetings? What's, what would be the professional courtesy for saying doing interviews in person? Some people may not be comfortable, some people may have to travel. So what are your thoughts on, on what that, on what that opens up?
First of all, I think applicants almost have to assume that there's going to come a point where things will begin to go somewhat back to normal and boards will conduct business face to face rather than in this way. None of us know exactly when that can happen yet, but I think whenever it is that we feel that that, you know, the, the conditions have changed, the stay at home order has been canceled and, and things have been loosened in terms of groups congregating. I don't know if there's going to be a limit on the numbers that are placed on that or whatever, but I mean, I could communicate that even when we initially select the candidates. Or I can do it now, frankly, I'm going to be reaching out to the people who've already applied and just let them know that if the board has the opportunity to conduct interviews face to face, it still desires to do so. But as things stand now, we're preparing for having to do this virtually. Given what we know, right? So it really would be ideal, I would think, that at some point you would have the opportunity to meet the candidates face to face versus hiring a superintendent, possibly after having never met him or her face to face. That's not ideal, but you know, again, we're all making the best of a tough situation. So I mean, absolutely, I think if we have the opportunity. And I think with this timeline, even though I put virtual in some spots, I mean, the first round interviews is they would be scheduled for this if we were to stick to that. The timeframe would be the same in terms of the, the starting and ending times of the interviews, whether we do them virtually or on site. The second round interviews, I think it could be the same if, if, if we were to do these virtually in second round. Let me take you back a little bit. And I hope I'm not jumping around too much. Tell me if I am or if I'm confusing you. Under the original plan for the finalist interviews, we would do them on two separate nights. And then during the course of the day, we would have each of the finalists meet with various stakeholder groups. If we don't do it that way, don't do it face to face, certainly, there's no reason we couldn't do both of the interviews the same night virtually. And then what I just did with Lake Orion, and we can talk about that a little bit, is we just took a stab with South Lion, excuse me, just took a stab at doing virtual stakeholder meetings, which actually went relatively well, I thought. It's not the same. But it certainly beats just kind of not doing anything at all. And so I would advise we look to do something similar, or we can be possibly creative. Even if we're able to go face to face for the second round interviews, again, I'm guessing that there's probably going to be some restriction put on the number of people you can have together at any one time. We don't know, but I'm guessing. So it may be that you're comfortable conducting the finalist interviews face to face with whatever restrictions go along with that. But still perhaps want to do those stakeholder meetings virtually. So even if that were the case, still, you could do both of the finalist interviews, even face to face on the same night. And then we can do the virtual stakeholder meetings subsequently that same week. Does that make sense? So I, we can certainly with all of this, as this timeline is laid out, with every step that you see here, even if we transition, I think if we start out assuming this is all going to be virtual, if we're able to transition back to face to face, I don't know that there's any one of us who doesn't think that that's beneficial. And there's no reason that we couldn't stick to this timeline and make that happen. So I can give the applicants a heads up just to kind of be prepped for either or to let them know as things stand now, it would be virtual. But if we're able to go face to face at any point, we'd still like to do so.
That'd be great. Other questions for John? Now, yeah, Nate?
Yeah, just looking at the timeline and wanting to move with, with speed, but without hurrying. Because, you know, the bias has to be towards getting it right, not getting it done fast on this. Looking at the timeline here, would it be to our advantage to figure out how to take a week out of this? So we're making our selection by the end of June? Because there are a couple of spots here where we may be able to compress things, but I don't know if that, what the, what, what that matters. There's something about getting it done in June and getting it before the Fourth of July holiday and pulling it forward. It would mean we'd shorten the window till end of month, you know, Friday instead of Monday, we'd have to turn a couple of things around a little bit quicker on it. But it looks like there, there could be a couple of spots where we could tighten up and get it done in the month of June. But John, I'd want to know if you think that's not advisable. Because obviously I'd rather, I'd rather go slower and get it right than hurry up. But if there's chances to do.
Well, I have a question for you, Nate. What would we gain by doing that? I mean, in realistic terms?
Yeah, I think the, the question for John is what do we lose by doing that? Like, is there, there's a couple of spots in here where we could tighten up. You could take a week out of the beginning of it, which would bring the whole thing back if we closed it on Friday instead of Monday. Friday, the, the end of the month, rather than the beginning of June. So it looks like you could be able to do that without actually losing anything. But it's a question for John on whether that's accurate or not.
I think you, there's an opportunity there, I think, by tweaking things somewhat that we could shave a week off potentially. In that earlier period of June, I'm not even sure we'd have to shorten the application window. I think what could happen, and let me share this, and then I'll tell you why I laid it out like I did, and we can talk it through. Even if we had on Monday, June 1st, that remained the application deadline, I have to hustle a bit, but I could do it. If we were to meet later that week, like that Thursday, June 4th, for that meeting where I would present applicants to you in closed session, you would make decisions about interviews. And then we could start the interviews the following week, the week of June 8. That would move, we could move the whole schedule up by doing it that way. The one negative for me, but we can make this work, is I am, I'm not available. I have commitments to other districts the week of June 8. So normally I'm stuck to like glue every step of the way, and I'm right with you there for all of the interviews, everything. I just literally physically can't be present the week of June 8, if that's when you conduct interviews. But if that works better for the board, we can do one of two things. We can kind of talk through. I don't take an active role really in, in the interviews. I'm present just to kind of troubleshoot and make sure things stay on track and you know, I want to make sure, of course, nothing's going wrong and there's, and there are no issues. I could either talk it through ahead of time just to try to make sure that you were set up to handle anything that may come your way. Or I could potentially even get a colleague just to sit in and kind of be that monitor for those first round interviews and just make sure if anything goes wrong, he or she would be there to step in.
Well, I, I think, I think the reason we hired you, John, was that you were going to be with us every step of the way. And for us to depart from that plan, I think we've departed from enough on this plan. In our haste that to do that, I think would be a mistake on the board's part. And I would not be in favor of you not being there during the interviews. I've been through the process. The person who's leading the search is of value being in the room during that process. And I would very much want you to be there.
That would be my preference too. But again, I, I want to remain flexible, which you know, again, it's odd, strange times and I think it requires flexibility. So, but I appreciate that.
If it was a, yeah, if it was a different step other than interviews, I think maybe, you know, you could, could look at it, but I would agree with Jim that during the interview process. Do we gain anything if we did the stakeholder meetings at the site visits in the same week? Or is that logistically impossible?
No, that's actually, that's if, if it would be tight in that the week before you would have selected your finalists. And now the following week, you would be conducting site visits. So it would give the two finalists a really, a pretty short period of time to arrange for the people who are going to be present and to participate. I'm not saying it can't be done. It probably would have to be done later that following week. Especially if this is all done, well, even if it's not done virtually. I mean, the, the short answer is yes, I think it could be done, that you could do all of that together, the finalist interviews, the stakeholder meetings, and then even the site visits, because you're not present for the stakeholder meetings. And so the stakeholder meetings could take place on the one hand, you could be three of you participating in site visits on the other. Just know that, that we'd be, it would be a tight timeline for the applicants, but that doesn't mean it can't be done.
Scott, did you have a question? Okay. Other question?
I just have an issue here.
Jake?
Yeah, I saw, I was looking at the time at the end and either moving the virtual site visits up or you know, condensing the time so that immediately after those site visits, we go right into, like on the Wednesday following, on Wednesday, the first, we, as soon as all that information is back, we meet, we find out what happened during these site visits. But I'm with Nate, anything that we can do to tighten it up and, and the importance to me is anything we can do to get a new superintendent onboard sooner, even a week. Because looking at July 27th, okay, so now you hire them one week earlier, that gives them 15% more time, one extra, you know, seven weeks instead of six weeks to get ready for what will be possibly the, the most unique restarting of a school year that we've ever had. So you know, making sure that everything's in place for the new school year. That was, you know, my big reason why I didn't want to wait till the fall was to get a person onboard. So if there's anything we could do at the backend, but I would agree with what everybody else has said, I would want, I would want John to be there with our interviews. You've learned us and you'll be able to read our comfort level and things like that. So there's definitely a benefit to having you with us.
Well, I appreciate that. And again, that absolutely is my preference. I, so I, I'm glad you feel that way too. So let me go back to what you're suggesting too, then. You're saying that if, if those virtual site visits were done, and I think June 29th and 30th, I have to look again. Is that Monday and Tuesday? Or, or, yeah, Monday and Tuesday, let's take a look.
Yes.
It is, okay. So I'll share this with you. And again, this, this see, the, the interesting thing about potentially being able to begin to do things face to face again, is it doesn't mean we can't still do some things virtually if it's to our benefit, right? So I'm going to say again, so what South Lion is doing, and this is, it's a first for MLI, they're guinea pigs. We're doing it this week. They're conducting virtual site visits. Those are going to take place Wednesday and Thursday. So I asked each of the two finalists, I, I shared with them what would normally happen, that they would gather groups of stakeholders together. And then the board, three board members would come to their district and face to face, the board members would sit down with these various groups, you know, anywhere from 30 to 40 minutes each. Have a chance to ask questions and kind of move on. So I let them know the types of groups that they would normally put together face to face and challenge them to within a three and a half hour period, do the best they could to create a schedule, gather, get stakeholders who would be willing to do this in a virtual format and create the type of schedule that they would do even if it was face to face. So they did that. And so Wednesday and Thursday, those three board members are going to be kind of cycling through, meeting with groups of stakeholders just like this. And so they're replicating that as best they can. The advantage that I see to doing it virtually in that way, and this is where South Lion is taking advantage of it, is that under normal conditions, the three board members who went on the site visits afterward, remember, would have an obligation to gather together and draft a joint kind of summary of what they saw and what they heard for the other four board members. What we're doing in South Lion, because it's different and we have the opportunity to, is the district is going to record the site visits, which you can do in this kind of a format. And once they do that, they'll make that available to the four board members who did not take part, they're going to be able to see it for themselves, which is really that part of it. I still, of course, we'd all prefer face to face, you gain something from that that you can't get like this. But that's the real advantage to doing it virtually is that the other four board members are going to see and hear just what the three did who participated. So if that were to happen, I guess is my point. So now if that's happening on June 29th and 30th, Monday and Tuesday, and then the district could immediately make those available for the other four board members, could you come back together that Thursday to make your decision? I mean, I suppose you could, and that would be totally up to you if you would like to.
Thursday, July 2nd?
Yes. So you wouldn't be gaining a, a ton of time, but you'd be gaining a bit by doing it that way.
Yes, Jake.
I'm going to direct this question to Rick. Would we need legal counsel to give us an interpretation if three board members do a virtual meeting and then four else can view it? Would that have to be made open to the public? Are we, are we at, in violation of Open Meetings Act or anything? Do you have, and I guess I'll ask you as well, John, that maybe South Lion.
I can surely look into it. My first initial response would be it would be no different than the sharing of documents that takes place outside of committee. So when you have finance committee, three members, you put together documents, you share those then with individual board members. I think that would be in line with that. John, maybe you would disagree with that or agree. I don't see it being a violation, but if the board would be comfortable, I surely could get a a legal opinion on it. What do you think, John?
But I, I, we have no reason to believe, I, I agree with the way you just summarized it, Rick. Um, and the South Lion Board is, is comfortable moving forward, um, and believing that we're in compliance with the open meetings that I'm not sure that they went to their legal counsel. Um, but it, it certainly, that would be something if you just wanted to be squeaky clean and totally certain and, and thought there was any risk whatsoever. I mean, sure, you, could you take it to legal counsel? Absolutely. I think you're fine though. I, 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 our belief is that, um, exactly the way Rick described it, um, which you can't do, it doesn't constitute an open meeting if you have the three board members participate. Um, and to share what occurred with the other board members afterward. Shouldn't be an issue.
Yes, Dana.
Okay. Um, thank you, John. Um, I want to say I agree with what everyone is saying. I'm on board, um, with everything. I do agree if we could tighten it up just a, a little bit, if it doesn't hurt any of the process or damage anything that we're doing, just because to have, um, him or her on the ground running a little bit sooner, especially in the environment that we are in would be great. Um, I also wanted to know, I want to be very cognizant of, um, how people are going to feel. I mean, the governor may say at the end of May, okay, you can do this. But we may have some people who have had COVID or had something else who may be, who may be stakeholders that want to be a part of things. But they can't come out yet, or they're not ready to come out or something like that. And so, um, I think, and this is a discussion we can have later. I just kind of want to put it in everyone's thoughts. Um, like for instance, I've had two family members pass away during this time and I live with an immune compromised person. We have been on lockdown and so June 1st, I'm sorry, I'm not joining you in a boardroom. I might later and we'll have to be separated and I'll be very cognizant of that. But that's just me and I can talk to all of my board members and see where everyone's at. But we have to think when we're thinking about virtual visits, um, there's also a liability. There's a liability on that school district's end if we go visit them. And we should, we'll have to sign paperwork and we'll have to do that. And it's the same thing if we gather stakeholders, you know, we'll have to make sure they haven't had COVID and they haven't done things. So I want to make sure that this is done in the most appropriate and we could have everyone involved who wants to be involved and we're not like lacking people out because they're not comfortable right now. Because even in June, we're not at a point yet where this is still going to be kind of, so those are just my two cents on how this whole process is moving on.
I appreciate that, Dana. And I think if I'm not mistaken, we were still talking about virtual stakeholder meetings and virtual site visits only.
Yes, and, and I do think, I agree Dana too, and I think that's why it's probably wise right now based on how things currently stand. Um, and not knowing how it's going to evolve, that we plan this assuming that it's all going to be done virtually. And then if, if things change to the point where we have the opportunity to do any part of this, and I think if there is any part of it, I tend to agree, I'm skeptical as to whether we'll be in the clear enough to be able to have these stakeholder meetings with the finalists or site visits face to face. I think that's, I have a hard time imagining that. Second round interviews, I don't know. Perhaps if you can limit audience presence and participation, social distance yourselves, you know, again, just to have the opportunity, if it's permissible, to be able to at least have that face to face dialogue, uh, to see if you get a different sense from those folks when you can see them in that way versus in this way, right? Um, maybe, and that may be the best we're able to do if we're able to, to go away from virtual for any part of this. That's just my opinion. But I do think we're better off at this point, planning for the whole thing to be virtual, but then staying nimble enough that if we have an opportunity somewhere, then we adjust.
That's well said. Other questions? Yes, Bergen.
Um, not so much a question as it is a comment, um, alluding to what Jake's concerns are. There's nothing about um, the proposed manner of the virtual site visit that John provided that South Lion will be doing that even resembles a meeting or a quorum. But if the board is interested in getting, um, an opinion on that, I would just like to say, I, I'd be happy to call M A S B on that rather than call a separate, um, there, there is legal counsel available through M A S B if, if the board wants to seek that out.
Sure, that'd be a good place to start.
Okay.
If you would, please.
I will, I will do that and follow up with you all.
Okay, thank you. Others? Yes, Dana.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, one more thing I forgot to say. Um, I know that you had said, um, that it might be a tight, like if when tightening up, when you kind of revise the schedule a little bit, it might be a little bit difficult for, um, the applicants to get their virtual, um, the virtual in, what am I saying? I'm looking at virtual site visits, um, in order. But in a way, to me, that's not necessarily a, a bad thing, meaning it kind of puts them a little bit under pressure and we can see how they manage in that way as well. Um, so I know it's not ideal. None of this is ideal, you know, but, um, I, I don't, there is a little, I wouldn't say it's still the best situation, but it might be if we can kind of look at it through a different perspective, if that's what needs to be done.
So I will say this, bear with me just a second. Let me, I'm opening my calendar up again. Um, if we so that, uh, June 22nd is, um, well, that's finalist interview. So we have the 15th and 17th for those first round interviews. Can I go back and ask this too while we're establishing the timeline? This we left in the open when we've talked about this before. You remember we talked about whether or not you wanted to come back together on whether there's two nights of interviews or three? To come back one additional night, give, walk away from it, give yourselves a chance to reflect and, and do you come back, uh, for another night just to make the decision? Or do you make that decision at the end of the last night of interviews? So before I forget, we'll want to discuss that too, but um, the sooner we can wrap that up, if we were to do the, if, if this were to end on the 17th, that's a Wednesday. And then those virtual site visits would be uh, let's say the following Wednesday and Thursday, the 24th and 25th, that gives them a week. Not a lot of time, but could it be done? It could. I mean, it could. It, it, so I, I tend to agree. I, I know that, that's asking a lot of these folks, but they're asking a lot of you. They're asking you to make them their next superintendent. Uh, and so if they want to be your next superintendent, um, the big ju- hoop to jump through, but I, I'm sure that they will do their absolute best to make it happen with fidelity.
Other questions? Are all of these dates that we have on this draft, uh, available for people to, uh, to conduct these things and the adjustments that we've talked about? Scott's good. Jake's good. Nate's good. Steve, Dana? Bergen, will those work for you?
Jim, are you talking about the dates on the draft?
The dates on the draft that we're holding and the adjustments that we've made or we're proposing. Because we have to be mindful of John's calendar as well. He's got other things happening simultaneously. And I think it's important that we get to some place, uh, that's pretty concrete tonight on the dates that we're talking about because, uh, you know, there'll be some areas that may need slight adjustments as we go, but I think by and large we need to have the, uh, plan set tonight.
Yeah, whatever is set tonight, by the way, those dates are going in my calendar and those are in stone and those are yours. So.
Absolutely. And I, if, if it's okay with you, would you refresh the adjustments that you're talking about that you made to this, to this timeline? Cause I'm a little confused.
I haven't done anything yet.
Oh, okay. So I just heard some dates out there and everyone agreeing to adjustments to this timeline. And I wasn't sure what, what the adjustments are to the timeline.
The, 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 the thing that we are, are talking about now is whether or not we want to move the virtual site visits up to have them take place during the week of June 22nd. So, um, and again, what we said was it's going to make things a little bit tight for the finalists. It'll give them maybe a week to get those arranged and prepare for the second round interviews, but they could, you know, it could be done. If we were to do that now, all of that would take place the week of June 22nd, finalist interviews, virtual stakeholder meetings, virtual site visits, virtual stakeholder meetings, remember, that's just me. Uh, and the, the finalists and stakeholders, it's not you. So your op, op, uh, obligation would be to fully participate, all seven of you in the finalist interviews, three of you to take place in those virtual stakeholder meetings or take part. Um, that would then move up the selection of the superintendent by, uh, one week. So that would be now the week of June 29th instead of the week of July 6th. And then presumably everything else moves up by a week. You could take action to hire, um, the week of July 6th and your, uh, new superintendent could be ready to start. Hopefully all goes well the week of July 20th.
Okay, I, that just, um, that sounds good to me. I want to keep in my, you, on your calendar with this, that there is a board meeting that Wednesday night on the 24th, a regular board meeting that we have scheduled. So, um, I don't know if that impacts what you just went over for that week, or if it does, maybe things, um, you talked about the virtual site visits and if those can be done during the day, if, if that Wednesday comes into play, just, I just want to make sure.
No, that's good. The, wha- what we're, what we've been trying to do in South Lion, and, and I really want to stress this, by the way, you know, it to a certain extent, it's experimental, right? We're, we're winging it. We're doing it, trying to do it intelligently, but we're still winging it. And we're trying some things that haven't been tried before to adjust. So, but the, the, so our, our thought was let's replicate what we'd be doing face to face as closely as we can virtually. And so, um, even at that, what we, I asked the two candidates to do was, was schedule a three hour block between the hours of nine AM and four PM. Um, normal kind of business hours. And that's what they did. So even if there's a board meeting that evening, again, it could be a lot for some of you too, but it could be done.
Sure. Jake?
While on the topic of site visits, do we want to firm up? Who, since the dates are firmed up, do we want to firm up which three are interested in being part of those site visits? And I will start the bidding by saying I am not interested. It would likely be during the workday and so.
Well, I, I think I probably should be part of that. Um, uh, who else would be interested in participating in that? Bergen, Scott? Okay. Others? Wait, I think we have our three.
Yeah, I could, I could go if somebody else didn't want to, but I'm totally confident with that team.
Okay. So June, uh, 29th and 30th, keep those for the three of you, keep those dates in mind. And it would be sometime again during normal business hours between nine and four, about a three and a half hour block each.
All right. Other questions, Jake?
So now that our timeline officially takes us back past the contract of our current superintendent, at what point is it standard to make the consideration, do the discussions and what is the process for approaching somebody as an assistant superintendent? Of course, that question can go to either you, John, or, or Rick.
As an assistant superintendent?
Interim, I think.
Interim. Oh, I see what you said.
That now we know we're going to have to, to name an interim at least for a few weeks because we need that one person at the top of the hierarchy officially.
I think the other option that probably makes more sense is to have Marion continue on a per diem basis uh, for a matter of a couple of weeks. And, uh, we will want her available to help with the transition as well. And so there will be that opportunity for her to hand things off to the incoming superintendent. John, what are your thoughts?
Um, you can go one of two ways. I, for, for a period that brief, I wouldn't even advise that you think about going outside of the district. Um, by the time somebody brought in would, would get the lay of the land, you'd be leaving, right? So I, I think you'd be kind of tossing money away. I don't know how effective they'd be or helpful. So I think, I mean, my, my bias is that in terms of ensuring as smooth a transition as possible, if your current superintendent were willing to stick around for an extra few weeks on a per diem basis, uh, and then help transition to the new superintendent, that, that's, um, you know, as, as smooth a transition as you can probably get. I think the only other option would be that you, um, if she's not willing or able, um, that you, if there's somebody else internally that you can have for that brief period of time, step up and just take on that role. Uh, which very honestly, there, there probably is not going to be barring any kind of, um, emergency or something critical occurring. Um, I, I, I don't think it'll be, uh, uh, too great an additional burden on that person. I would say though, that it shouldn't be, if you do have an internal, uh, candidate at that point, uh, in the running, it shouldn't be that person, it should be somebody else.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Jake. You're muted.
Thanks, Nate. That at that point, we would know um, June 1st, which candidates are or not June, June, here, let me go to the calendar. It wouldn't, June 8th, wouldn't it be that that's the point where we would know if any of our internal candidates have applied. Until then,
Yes.
we, we aren't made privy to that. So it's not too late to wait until June 8th to make that decision. Especially since it's such a brief period, uh, looking to, again, you, John, and you, Rick, to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in in a bad way. In case we choose not, in case we, we have options, we may choose to retain Marion, we may choose to go in a different direction. It's not too late to do that on June 8th.
Um, I, I would advise, Rick, I'll let you speak up on your behalf too. And it's not my district, but I, I would think for your own comfort level, once this timeline is set and we're just about there, I think the sooner you've got a plan in place and know exactly who's going to be kind of running the, the, the show for those few weeks in transition, the better off you are. And very honestly, if there was somebody, uh, and, uh, internally other than Marion, we wanted to approach to see if they were willing and the board was in agreement, honestly, at that point, you could ask the question. I don't think it's an internal person. You could ask them if.
I think the first question is what would the board's preference be? And would that be approaching Marion and finding out her desire and or availability? Um, I think that would be first step, you, you as a board deciding if that would be your preference as choice A. Um, and if for whatever reason that is not your choice and or Marion is not, uh, um, able to do so or willing to do so, um, then what is plan B? And I believe, Jim, you've had previous conversations with Marion of this nature, have you not?
I have. And, um, she would be willing to stay for that brief period of time. And again, uh, she will need to be available to the new superintendent for the transition anyway. So it would seem logical for the sake of I don't know, what do we say? 19 days? Uh, and those are not all workdays that, uh, uh, it would make for a smoother trans-
Hi.
Yes, Nate.
I wasn't, I wasn't quite, yeah, I, I wasn't quite following the logic on that. If the new person doesn't start until later in the month, then the transition time we would want, if we wanted to have Marion be available for transition time, that wouldn't be on the same timeline. That would be after the new person starts to be accessible as a resource.
Correct. That's correct.
So, so this, this gap is a different, is a different gap because we're looking at the period of time from her announced retirement of June 30th until the new person's start date. So those are, those seem like, uh, not, not invalidating either of them, but they seem like two different issues.
Well, they are, but it doesn't make sense, at least to me, that you'd stop somebody for 20 days and then have them return to to transition.
But then you're
The new person.
But that proposal would mean we would be looking to keep Marion for two months or for a longer amount of time after June 30th, if we're looking to have her
Right.
Part of the transition.
I don't know, we'd have to ask John, but I would say that, uh, her time spent with transitioning would be, would be very brief.
Uh, I'll tell you what I think, having experienced it before. Um, there, there, quite often there's this notion that, that we need to keep the There, there, quite often there's this notion that, that we need to keep the previous superintendent on for, let's say, like a week spend with the new superintendent. That gets uncomfortable very quickly, I'll just say.
Yes.
You don't need much time. In fact, in my opinion, honestly, I think if you had a day.
That's what I was thinking.
That would be enough. And then with, hopefully the understanding too, from your outgoing superintendent, from Marion in this case, that she would be available if, if the new superintendent then just had a question about an issue that arose or whatever, that she'd be available to reach by, by phone or email. But very honestly, in my experience, by day two, like I said, it starts to get kind of awkward and uncomfortable. And the outgoing superintendent just kind of is in the way.
I would agree.
So I don't know where we're at in discussing or deciding, right? Because we have two options on the table, which is name an interim for those X number of days, 20 days, or ask Marion if she would stay on for that. Is that the decision where, are we making that decision now? Or is that something that we need to contemplate?
I think we said we were going to wait till the 8th.
I thought John said that.
Correct on that, Jake?
I, I've also, I'm with Nate. I thought I heard, I think it was John or Rick said that we should make that decision sooner rather than later.
I don't want to tell you what you should do and forgive me if it sounded that way.
No, no, I, I understood, but your experience, you know, we hired you for a reason, for your experience and, and if, Rick, if you have an opinion on that as well, because you're, you're a human resources professional as well. So is it, would it be better for us to make that decision now or in the next? We either would have to do it at the meeting on the 13th or the, or the 27th.
As, as your representative for HR, I would think the professional courtesy would be to make that determination now, especially with your current superintendent, to one, gauge her level of interest, which I think Jim, you said she has already, and then as a board, making a determination now to ask someone two to three weeks before their last day, if they would like to stay on, I think is a little tough. And I'm not sure that's, from my perspective, what we want to be about as an employer.
All right, that being said, plan A is to have Marion continue until the 20th. And plan B would be to find somebody to fill in, and we have a holiday in there, so it'd be a matter of, it would be a matter of nine workdays. Do you want to find somebody new for nine workdays or do you want to have Marion fill those nine workdays if she's willing? Yes, Scott?
I would support having Marion do it for those nine days. That doesn't make any sense to try to get somebody up to speed or, you know, especially if one of the candidates is one of the people that we would have, just, to me, it makes sense to, you know, talk to Marion right now if you've already had that discussion with her and she's cool with it. If Rick can talk to her, I mean, and I think we owe that to her as a, you know, a nice gesture. I mean, we're not trying to kick her out the door, you know, she's retired. So that's my thought.
All right, thank you, Scott. Steve, you had your hand up?
Uh, no, I think everybody's on board. Jim, you already spoke to Mr. Naples and it'd be silly to do anything else. But we have every right to do so if somebody wants to suggest another plan, but I don't see why. Go to another route when you've already contacted her. We have a superintendent as current that wishes to enable to stay on. And I think we're on the right path. I would suggest we do it today instead of the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
My concern is, what if something, you know, there's a candidate we like and we want to hire this person and then that person can't leave and they can't start till August 1st or something happens? I mean, how much longer are we extending this with Marion? Would it be more appropriate to name an internal interim? And that way, if there's some issue that happens with our candidate choice, we at least have someone who we know is going to stay here for a longer haul than what would happen if, you know, if it just, I mean, if we could guarantee it's nine days, that it's nine days. But there's things that happen and I think that we need to kind of look at the long term for that, or at least that's what I'm looking at. So I'm going to be, I'm thinking right now, I'm trying to process all of this information, but that's just my input at this point.
Okay, all right. Burgett?
Uh, I would be comfortable having Marion fill in for the brief timeframe in July.
Okay, thank you. Jake?
I'm with, I'll say I'm with Dana, that my concern is, I was, I came into this not pre-assuming that Marion was going to be the person. And I'll say the other way that I would be comfortable with, close your ears, Rick, any of our three assistants. We have a very good cabinet. We would have to, and as a board choosing that way, especially in light of what John has said, and I've heard that from Marion herself before, that said, new superintendents aren't that interested in hearing what the old superintendent, you know, it, it gets old real fast. So to keep her on when we're not getting a benefit from that, I would be more inclined to do an interim that would be here and be the leader in case there is some sort of hiccup that our preferred candidate, for some reason, we can't, we don't reach a contract with, or for whatever reason, something happens, I would be more comfortable having a long-term, one of our internals appointed as the interim.
Nate?
Yeah, I'm with Dana and Jake's, I thought you guys summarized it well. Marion's built a talented team. It's a short amount of time. We have a retirement date set. And I think I'd be very confident in the team that she's built up to be able to manage that, that gap, provided one of, one of them would be interested in an interim spot. So I agree with that logic.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have four people who are in favor of Marion staying without taking a vote here and three who would look at an alternative plan. What I would suggest or request is that we have Marion continue in that role up until the time, should we hit any snag at all, that at that point in time, we, we could transition to one of the members of her cabinet and, and go from there. But we're anticipating that we're going to be on task here. And I think that we've done things to ensure that we're going to be on task. And to that end, I believe that we would conclude at, at the time that we're targeting and that would leave us with nine days. And so with four of us in favor of that, I would say that that would be the plan that we would adopt. With the caveat, should we have a delay of any kind, that we would transition to another member of the administrative team for any kind of extension of what we were looking at beyond the, the July 20th date. Is that something that everybody can live with? Okay, all right. John, anything else that we need to cover right now? And could you send out the amended, or get that to Julie so she can send it out to us? The amended timeline that we're going to be working with?
Can I just verify? Because I thought when we were reviewing the changes, proposed changes, we talked about the virtual site visits being bumped up to the week of June 22nd. And then when you, when, when we talked about the three members that were, would be performing that duty, John, I believe you asked them to still hold 29th and 30th, so I wanted to make sure I didn't miss them.
You're right, I misspoke.
Right, I think we were looking at the 25th and 26th, correct?
We were.
25th.
Thank you, good catch Julie. I'll make sure I get that right in the timeline.
Okay. I know we're, we're working on another timeline that we're keeping posted on our website. So we want to make sure we get all that fresh too.
Sure.
So make sure too, you've got your own notes. I'm going to revise this, this evening. There's no time like the present, right? So I'll just do that. There's just a few tweaks. I'll send that to you Julie this evening.
Okay.
But, but look it over carefully and if you see anything else that doesn't jive with what you heard tonight, just get ahold of me and we'll make sure that it's good to go before we send it off to the board.
Great.
Jake?
So are we doing candidate selection then tentatively on Monday, June 29th? Just so we take it through to the next step?
Yes, that's what I've got.
So we, so we'll get a meeting invite from Julie for the 15th, 16th, 17th, the 22nd. And then those who are doing site visits, the 25th, 26th, and then all of us again on the 29th.
Yes, and then the other tweak is that then I've got now on Monday, July 6th, you would be coming together to take action, which again, at that point, presuming you've, you've successfully negotiated the contract, which if I can go back just real quickly, the way to expedite that, and you may have a different way, so I'm just going to let you know what I've seen districts do, just as an option. But have your legal counsel draft a proposed contract in advance so that as soon as on the 29th, you've made your selection, the following day on the 30th, you can get the draft agreement to the new superintendent. He or she would have a chance to have their own legal counsel review it. And you really could very likely by doing it that way, have an agreement by the end of the week and be prepared to come back together on the 6th and make it official.
One other thing I, I think we don't want to lose here is that depending on the number of candidates that we're going to be interviewing, that we may want to leave the option for meeting on the 18th for conversation about the first round interviews. I think that was in our original plan.
And. We did.
And I, I think we, we want to keep it on there as a, as a backup.
Okay, I can reflect that on this draft.
Okay, great. Jake?
I had my hand up and I was listening to you so well, Jim, I lost, it was on, it was on the timeline. But I don't, don't recall what it was. Didn't have a pen to jot something down. Oh, it was about negotiations, the salary benefits, things that we would offer and you moved on my screen, John, so then, so I was looking down and you weren't where you were. That, so the, the package that we would offer, so we come together on the 29th to select the candidate. In that meeting, is that where we public, do we publicly discuss what type of offer we would be making in terms of salary benefits and such things, depending on, you know, the qualifications and background of the candidate that we do select? When does that get discussed about those, those specifics?
So I, I, you know, again, this varies from district to district, so let me be clear about that. One model I've seen is that you could have a board subcommittee come together in advance and come to terms, in terms of what you may want to offer a new superintendent and then seek the approval of the rest of the board or concurrence of the rest of the board. I hear what you're saying, that it may depend on the experience of the candidates. But you still made, by subcommittee, be able to come with kind of a, something close to what you would be willing to offer just about anybody, just to, to expedite that. And then maybe even once you got down to the two finalists, I suppose, if you thought there might be a differentiation depending on which of the two finalists you pick, you could even at that time decide if it's candidate A, we're going to offer this, if it's candidate B, we're going to offer this as an initial offer, knowing that that person can come back and, and negotiate it too, if that makes sense. But again, I'm sharing with you what I've seen, a model that I've seen work in other districts. It does not have to be done that way at all. Your call.
That was what I was thinking is that, looking at our timeline, that after we did the finalist interview, when we're doing the virtual site visits, getting that, you know, as we get some of that feedback, that a subcommittee could get together that week and I would.
I think that some time ago, we did have a conversation about the superintendent evaluation committee functioning in that capacity as the the bridge between the board and that process and that just like we do with other committees, with other issues. And then the, the entire board would be engaged from there. Yes, Scott?
Is that something that Rick's involved with? So he can get his expertise as far as the negotiations and things like that?
Well, let me say, let me start by saying this, we do have a proposed starting point of a contract that we worked through in February with Clark Hill. I'm not sure to the extent that's been shared with the entire board, Jim.
Right.
And John, I think we did share that with you back in February.
Now that you say that, I think that, that came up when we were looking at establishing the salary range in the posting, I do recall.
So there is, and I just resent to the two of you, and I don't know to what level you want to share that with the rest of the board, but what was done in February in working with Dana Abrams from Clark Hill, I provided her a copy of the current superintendent for Marion. And she then also looked at from her perspective, in the best interest of the board, what they typically would recommend as legal counsel for the board in a superintendent contract and kind of merge those two together. I shared with her, you, those that have been on the board for some time are accustomed to, you know, a certain format, which that format is used for even cabinet level contracts. So it mirrors what you have seen in the past, like in Marion's contracts. But there are some revisions and some updates and there's a lot of blanks. And those blanks are for you then as a board to determine, like the salary range, vacation days, those types of things.
And I think to, to John's point, that much of that could turn beyond the basic structure, much of the specifics could turn on who we're talking about as far as a candidate and what our threshold is for any given candidate. Would that be correct, John?
Yes.
So we have the basic structure. It's been reviewed by counsel. We're in a place to begin that process, but certainly the entire board has to be aware of what the next steps are and as it relates to the candidates that we're taking a final look at for our discussion purposes. So I'm sure we'll, we will have that discussion as we get closer with more specific information. Others? Yes, Dana?
Okay, so before we leave, can we, I'm a little bit all over the place because I know we were throwing around lots of dates. So I just want to make sure, I know Julie's going to send it out, but I'll feel better if I have it on my calendar. So is our, the next time that we meet to go over the applicants, is that still June 8th?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next week will be, it will be either the 15th through 17th or the 15th through 18th, depending on the number of candidates we choose.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And then we'll come together, no wait, what's on the 22nd then?
That will be the, still the finalist interviews and as things currently stand, you would do both of those now on the same night.
Okay.
260 minute interviews.
260 minute, and the other interviews are going to be 90 minutes, correct?
They will, which is why no more than, than two per, per evening for those.
Per evening, okay. So we can expect 260 minute, okay. And then the site visits will be the 24th and the 25th. And then we'll come together on the 29th and make a decision. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Any final questions? Okay, so just to recap things here, John will assemble the chronology of what we're going to be doing. Get it to Julie, Julie will get it out to us. We are all going to confirm those dates. So we don't have any. Uh, so we don't have any uh, detours in the process. And uh, we will get things underway. John will post it in the morning, correct?
Yes.
And uh, begin to make contacts with uh, uh, possible other candidates and.
Can I mention one more thing?
Yes, please.
So uh, the way you would get another bite at the apple too, I'd mentioned this to you before, but in the event that um, there is somebody who you would like for me to reach out to during this three week window, that you know if it could be a viable applicant. You let me know, I, I will follow up and do so.
Thank you. All right. Closing comments, uh, we've all been making comments, so if you have a closing comment, raise your hand, otherwise I'll just say that you probably don't have one. Any closing comments? Yes, Bergen?
Uh, is that a closing comment? I just, my, it's my to-do list and that's, I will get back with you with what I hear from Brad Bonasik from M A.
Yes, if you would, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, others? All right, that being said, thank you very much, John. We appreciate your leadership in this.
My pleasure.
And uh, you know, this is the most important thing this board does, any board does at any time, is making the right hire for the benefit of the entire district. And um, we have to make that commitment every step of the way to make sure we're doing the right job for the right reasons. And uh, your leadership is important to that. Hearing no other comments, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.